I'm gonna try.
I wanna just go through some of these songs, see if I can find it, but uh, it's okay. Uh, I have it recorded somewhere too, but I don't know. Where all my kingdom sounds are. But anyway. Um, one of the things I did do. Let me minimize this. Can you all see my screen? Okay, one of the things I did do was, I transcribed the uh. Well, I, I put the Nicud with the. Uh, divine salutation. Alright, so we'll go through that tonight. That'll be a plus, I've been promising that. Alright, so let, let's go ahead and get started here. I'm not gonna go through this too much, we've done it uh, several times already. But it's na lehagish akivo. There you go. Not forgetting the lehagish. Yes ma'am. Then we have the. Um, the verb, the verse here.
Would you read that again please?
Yahwa. Safta. We have. And remember, we're saying that L twice. Yahwa safta tifta ufi yahgi tahilatika.
Yahwa safta. Yagi.
Agid.
Yagi tahilatika.
Tahilatika, yeah. That, 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 I mean, I, sometimes, you know, the pronunciation sounds horrible, but that's just, that is what it sounds like, you know, and we kinda. Blow by it sometimes, cuz you don't know what it's saying, or we're going by memorization, which is fine. Memorization is the first. Level of, you know, acquisition. So. Tahilatika, it's a very ugly, hard syllables to say in there, but you just gotta.
Oh, no, it's not.
Yeah, so then, so then we go to the divine salutation here, right? We have kodum. Uh, no. This is, I'm sorry, this is the raising of the art. Remember, we have, this here is, I, I had this here to, so you can see the syllable break. It, it's like that. Right? And we can, we always can notice the endings, the ka, 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 and the. U and the u, and then the mi and the mi also are, uh, additions to the root word, so. Panee is how you say face. Panee, let them flee from before the face that belongs to him, or your face. From me, from the face of him. Let them flee from the face of him. And, and that's a big thing, not just, not just, not just to let them, let them be scattered, right? That's, that is not what the word, uh. Be pannecha means, it's not to scatter, it is to get out of my face. Cuz he, when you, when you, when you scat, I mean. It, it's, it's, it's a context, right? But it's a connotation. I talked to my students in English about this all the time, and I ask them, I say, which one of these words is colder? Cold or freezing? And they always say, oh, freezing is colder than cold. I say, well, how do you know that freezing is colder than cold? When I haven't given you any context, I just said two, two words. But there's something about saying the word freezing that just makes it colder than cold. And so, when you tell somebody to scatter. It's, it's different than when you say, get out of my face. Scatter is kind of polite, scatter is kinda like, leave me alone, but get out of my face is. I'm gonna do something to you if you don't obey this command. There's a, there's a, there's a different level of urgency, or, or contempt in get out of my face. So, um, we, we go on to the divine salutation. Now, some of this, I, I, I told you I break this rule all the time. But the rule is, you will never see any writing that utilizes the Nicud only half of the time. But I do it on purpose so that we can start practicing. Saying things without the Nicud, so you'll see me breaking that rule. Although, if you were to get a book or something in Hebrew, if it has the Nicud in one page, it'll have the Nicud throughout, okay? But I'm breaking that rule so that we could exercise our. Our, our knowledge and skills, alright? Um, and there was one word here. Right here. That I could not find the Nicud for, so we're gonna have to just, uh, take my word for it being like Sarave and Nasakave, okay? Alright, so here we have, right here, we have. Uh, kodum. Cold. In fact, um, let me get somebody to try to read the first line. To, let's read, get somebody to read to this, uh, apostle, this comma right here.
Kodum kol kol. What's that? I don't know what that is.
So this is gonna be. Ya right there. Le ya Yahwa, yeah, so, so, uh, what you hear in, well, we say a lot in the kingdom, we'll say, ya. Yahwa, ya Yahwa, three things, ya. As the masculine. Yahwa as the feminine. And ya Yahwa as a, as a, as a duality. So, when, when we say, that one of the truth scrolls is, ya Yahwa, ya Yahwa. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right? So, you'll hear us saying ya, and you'll hear us saying Yahwa, and sometimes we say it together, ya Yahwa. There are some other Hebrews that I know, and they use the word ja Allah, ja Allah, which is the same thing. Ja Allah, uh, but it's, that's Arabic and not Hebrew. You'll see, you'll hear them say ja, then they'll say ja, uh, then they'll say Allah, and then they'll say ja Allah. Let me, uh. Let me divert real quick, and I'm gonna show you that. If this thing will let me. Alright. So. We have ja. And then we have. Allah. Okay, so you have ja Allah, and then you have. Uh. Ja Allah. And this is how you'll see it written sometimes in the Quran. Um, Arabic is just like Hebrew, it's right to left, and, um, what's very interesting is, um. This is the letter J. No, that's not the letter J, the letter J is. Um, I'm trying to make this symbol here. Maybe that was it. No, that's not it, but anyway, um. When you look at the. Let me show you Arabic alphabet. Just to divert a little bit, um. So, the character that is, that they used to make ja is this one right here. So, in Arabic, for instance, there are only like, there are only like twelve actual letters. And each letter has three different variations, so you can see, uh, this one here has one, two, three. This one here has one, two, three, and so, depending on those, those. Those Niku, th- th- those are, those are not called Niku, but they are, they're just like the Niku, I forget what they call them in Arabic, but depending on where the, the strokes are. On the letter tells you what sound it makes and everything else, and so, um, it's just twelve letters that have different strikes on them. But that's where you get the ja Allah, and so you, you'll hear some Hebrews maybe, or some Arabic, or some Muslims using the word ja. Or using the word Allah, and Allah, Allah means is mighty one, right? So ja, the mighty one, and you'll see this sometimes in the Quran as well. Um, going back to, you know, is, uh, Islam, um, and Hebrew, are, are, are the. Ishmaelites and the Hebrew Israelites, uh, because we were brothers, our religion and our. Uh, deity was very similar, so that's what you'll see in, in, in Quran. Um. So here we have. Um. Ya Yahwa. Right? Ya Yahwa. Then you have. Israel, and this is one of our sight words. Ya and Yahwa are also sight words. So I don't, I don't have any clue to knows, cuz you're supposed to know those by heart, right? You gotta remember, you gotta memorize Israel. And, uh, ya and Yahwa, those are sight words. Another good word to memorize is cold, because we use cold a lot, and that is everybody or all. We'll go through this in a minute, only after we, cuz I don't come out to reverse everything on this, and you'll see what I mean in, in a second. Um. So, yon kados Israel. Kados Israel. Then we have. Somebody start from here and read.
Is that lahavani?
Say it again?
La.
Lavenu, yeah, lavenu. La avenu, you're right, la avenu. I was, while you were talking, I was thinking. I was thinking, yeah.
So you're saying la, I hear the A song, and then another A, venu?
Say, say it real fast, and you can't tell if it's la or le, right? I mean, don't, uh, don't, don't try and, uh. Look, be overcorrect, right? Because nobody's gonna stop you in Israel, say, hey, you said lie instead of lead, or le, you know? So, as long as you're saying the lama, uh, they know that you're saying two or four.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, it, it, it's okay to wanna know the, how to pronounce it, how to pronounce it. But, uh, it's, it's not really gonna make a difference when you're saying it, alright? Uh, le Isra, uh, kados Israel, le avenu, le avenu, right? V or V, right? The, I was trying to think if it was a sedi or a shiddic ude right there. But if I put a sedi, if I put a sedi right here. Watch this, if I put a sedi right here, and I gotta follow the rule of consonant and vowel consonant. Then this has to be a consonant. So, which would change the, the sound of the ending, so, this is a shiddic ude, because it's a consonant, vowel, and then nu is the next consonant. There's a little, little semantic, uh, requirement right there for that to be a, a, a shiddic ude. Le avenu, and this is of course Abba, right? Father, Ab, Ab. As in Abraham or Abba, right? Le avenu. Um. Right here we have. Yeah, Adanenu, you're right. Adanenu. What's next? I have erased, I have removed the name Ben Ami from there, but they would say, they would say Adanenu Ben Ami Hamashiach. Right? I've removed the name there, um, because there are people that I invite to the class, and I don't want that one. Addition to be, uh, stumbling block for them, so I removed that, but you'll hear the kingdom say, uh, le avenu. Adanenu Ben Ami Hamashiach. Naming Ben Ami as the Messiah. Right here we are, what's next? Lenessi Cave.
Lenessi Cave.
Cave, yes ma'am, Len- Len- Lenessi Cave. And that is, we're gonna, we're gonna go through it, I don't wanna, I don't wanna mess with this tab right now, cuz it, I'm gonna go through the whole thing in reverse, but. That's where it is, Lenessi Cave, and then we have. Yeah, same, uh, same ending, right? And that comes from the word sar. Then you have. Find, but we're gonna put the same kamats yudvav ending on it, so it's arturave, and artur in Hebrew just means crown. So, the, the Crown Brothers and Sisters is, they call them arturs and arturim, arturim and arturots. And together, arturave, his men, his crowns. And then we have.
The cold.
What's next? Yes, Cassidi. What the, what the, what the shavamix? There you go.
Okin.
No. This is not, uh, the root word, this is, uh.
King.
Shereko king. Shen is a. Addition to the root word. Uh, we talked about. Where can I go? We talked about the additions to the root word. You guys, you ladies remember that?
Okay.
Um, let me see, it was one of these. Talked about the additions to the root word. Um. Dang it, I kinda moved it over here, so it's now, it's not showing up, um, but. Let's see. I think it was a little further back than this, but, uh. I, I can find it real quick. I wanna, um. What was the, uh? Hebrew. Pronomeno. Suffixes. No, I think it was, I think it was affixes, right? Hebrew. Affixes. And. We talked about. I think it was here. I don't, I don't remember where it was, but it was, it might have been even on Wikipedia, where we saw all of the, uh. All of the prefixes and suffixes and the lists of, uh. Yeah, it, it was probably on Wikipedia, uh, let me, let me just try. Um. Yeah, I was right, so, let's look at, let's look at share real quick. What does it say for share? Okay, so that, which, who, and whom, okay, so when we say. When we say, uh, shereko king. Allo share, no, share co, share kerro. Allo share. Herovim, ala shereko king, share na, what's this? Shanaevakim, yeah, shanaevakim. Right?
Lamaano.
Lamaano, yeah. Or mevar. There was a car in there, but it's a, it's a kamats, but it's a shavat, so it wasn't mevar, right? And this, this here is. You can pronounce the shavat, you cannot pronounce the oats king, or ot king. And this is a sight word. Alech, yes, so, so let's, before we go through it again, I'm gonna show you this, uh. I'm gonna show you the, the breakdown of this, okay? We're, we're gonna go back and forth from this tab to this tab. Make sure you got, make sure you can see the tab. Now, this is gonna be in the reverse, because as I was doing it in, in the forward direction. Um, I'm reversing it back out now, so here we have. Alech, right? This was the alech. Um, all, right, upon, or about regarding, right? So on you, alechim. I'm gonna reverse back. Okay, now we have. What is this? Let me see, so. Oh yeah, ot king. This is ot king, right? Ot. I talked about, uh, I talked about. How. You have the direct object and the indirect object. So you wouldn't say, I love you, ani, ha, ha, va, ta, you would say, ani. Otka, right? You, you have to use the indirect object, you, for that, and we haven't talked about these yet, but we will. So ot king, this word here. Ot king is, right? The direct object. King. Right? Uh, we're, we're working way back, ani mevarich, I ble, I welcome, right? I welcome you. Ani mevarich ot king, I welcome you. Right? Let's get mevarich, let's go back a little bit more. There's ot king. And here's, uh, mevarich, I bless you, or I welcome you as well. Alright? Mevarich, and that's masculine. You see? And feminine is what? Mevarichit. You gotta scratch your throat, mevarichit. There you go, try to practice that a little bit, cuz, uh, they do, uh, they will be listening for that guttural sometimes. Yeah, that. Look at this one, mevarich. So, um, very good, uh, very good, uh, verb to practice on. Right? Same, same where you get the word. Baruch, right? Same word, baruch. See, it says to bless, to welcome, and to greet, so. I mean, to bless, to greet, and to facilitate, or to welcome, so you can say, I welcome you, or I bless you. This is very interesting, that that word can mean welcome and bless. Uh, that was, uh, ani mevarich ot king, or ot king. You can say ot king, or you can say ot king, doesn't matter. Um. But ani mevarich ot king, I welcome you, I bless you, let's go back to this word now, ah. Ma, le, le ma anu, le ma ano, now I knew, but I know, le ma ano. Let's go back to that word. And we're gonna blow this out. And it's right here. His answer, or its answer, right? Ma ano. Ma ano. Le ma ano, and I wanna see what this is, let's, let's zoom in, let's zoom out, so we can see what it says here. Um. It says, and to those who are struggling in his name, or for his sake. Right, or for his answer, for his answer, le ma ano. Right? Ma ano, his answer, his sake. You see that? Ma ano. Um. We have O, we know O is like, uh. We know O is. Like saying. Uh, or. Oh is just or. Okay, going backwards in time now. Um, bishmo, right? This was a very strange word for me, uh, when I first started learning this. Bishmo, cuz look at the, look at the root word. Best, best thing, best shame, right? Best shame. Which is the name, right? Isn't shame, isn't shame the name? The name, right, name, and in the name, right, be shame, in the name. But we're saying bishmo. Yeah, bishmo is weird. So we have bishmo, in his name, or. For. His sake, right? This oh and oh, see that oh? The two ohs. They have the same ending, the oh is right there. And you have the oh right there. So we know that both of those endings indicate his, his. So, in his name, or for hit the sake of him. In the name of him, or for the sake of him. Bishmo or le mano, le ma ano. Bishmo or le ma ano. Bishmo. Ma ano, there you go. Bishmo or le ma ano. And, and so, I'm, I'm hearing that y'all are, uh, using the niku to sound out the words. And that is exactly what you call decoding, that is what, exactly what you should be doing. Uh, when you, when you're reading Hebrew that you've never heard before, is just sounding out the words. The same way you would sound out a word you don't know in English, you do the same thing in Hebrew. So, so now we're gonna go to this shame, right? This is the, the share. That we're gonna look at. And they, they give some good examples here. Uh, but we're gonna go to this share right here, share na, share ne e. Va king, share, share ne eva king, shana eva king. Alright, let's see what this says. Look at that. Ne eva king. They used, this is pure, right? They struggle, right, share, share ne eva king. And we, so we have. Who, right? Or that, or which, those who, those whom. Those whom struggle. Sh- share ne eva king. Share ne eva king. Very interesting word there. Share ne eva king. And don't be afraid to, don't be afraid to bounce that E sound, that I, I, I call it. I call it dribbling the sound, right, cuz you gotta dribble that E sound, cuz that alif is silent, share ne e. Share ne e, share ne e. Share ne eva king. Don't be afraid to dribble that E sound. There you go, share ne eva king. And then you just drop your jaw on that ba, share ne eva, share ne eva king. It's a very hard word to sound out too, you know, and this one here is share what? Very, they, they sound, much, they sound very much alike. Let me see. Look at them. Share rare ko king.
The people that are in a far distance, okay.
Yeah. Sharekoko king. And that means to be far away. Those who are, to whom, that are, or, or distant, right, or far. And so, if you know what share revoking is. You know what, share care rovav king. Uh, no, share care roving. What is share revoking? Share care over, uh, share care over. Share care over. Yeah. It's the opposite of far, right? And, and with this here, the, the, the strange thing, this word here. This word that I'm highlighting is the same as this word, but one of them has the. Uh, the led on it, right? So watch, let's see. Rico king is, share rare ko king is distant or far. And then we have. Share, cool, share care roving. And that, now, they have, they have, they have crunched all these together, right? But I told you that when you have that shiva. You can pronounce that shiva as a little E, so it's. They're saying croveen, but it's shake care roving. Shake care roving. Shake care roving, yeah. And I, I, I didn't copy that thing here, I copied it right here, so now we'll see what this word here says. Uh, let's see. Here we go, Allah. Strange word, right? Let's go back to it and see. So it says. The family, kasa di, right, le Allah. Shake care roving, those, let us, let me zoom out. Right, so look. What does it mean to stick?
Follow.
So this is not, this is not like a twig stick, it means like to stick, right? Those who stick, eh, eh, well, let's see where it says here, look. Le Allah, right, to. The followers. Who are near, which are near, right? The followers. Which are far.
Right.
And then, that, or whomever. Is struggling, right, in the name. Of him, or for the sake of him. So, the, the stick is the followers. Le Allah, yes, le Allah, the follower. And that, it, it also kinda gives you the, the answer to what. Allah means, right? Le Allah. Ja Allah. The followers of Ja. Just throwing that out there. Maybe, make, maybe, maybe it'll give you a different insight when you hear the word Muslims say Allah, right?
Followers, uh huh.
Yeah. Or, uh, the person to whom you want to follow, right? So, um, Allah. Share cattle beam, Allah, share Rico king, na, 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 share ne eva king, right? Share ne eva king. So let's, let's keep going back, we're, we're going back in time, kasa di, let's see what kasa di is. A devotee. A follower. There's a, there's a whole movement of Hasidic Jews, right, in New York City. They call them Hasidic Jews. So we have. Um, where is the word, I, I, I just, I think I just copied it from here, but you see, uh. Casa di, kessit. Right, kindness and grace, I have, uh. This is off subject, but, uh, I have a. Series that I do on. I have a series that I do on Fridays, and it's called. Um. It's called Words of His Grace. Let me see if I can find it real quick. Close that, alright, um, what was I looking for? Uh.
Words of his grace.
Yeah, there you go. Um, you might not be able to see what I have up right now, but. Let me see. If I can find it. I might have to put in my, my jump draw for that, but anyway. Uh, the, the, the name of it is called, uh, debaram hakesset, right? Debaram hakesset. Words of his grace. Seems like I should be able to find that though somewhere. Yeah. I wouldn't planning on showing that, so I don't know where I put it, but it's in here somewhere.
So say a little bit about it. On Fridays.
Yes, ma'am, Fridays, it's a. It's a class that I have. Um. Yeah, um, it's called. This is one of the titles here of it, can you see that? And so this is, this is one of the titles I do. Um, I do little, cuz when, when I put it up there on the, uh. When I put it up there, I, uh. I always put a little title like this when I upload the video, so I can keep track of it. I think I know where I can find it. This is my Facebook page. Photos. Uploads. Here we go. Can y'all see that? Debaram hakesset, right, words. W- 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 debaram, right, the words plural, hakesset, the words of grace. And of course, it would, it would have been kessido, right, debaram hakessido, to be his grace. But that didn't sound right, it didn't look right, and so I just didn't put the O on there. Most Hebrews wouldn't even understand that, is words of the grace, and that words of his grace, but. They don't know. But this is, this is a thing I do every once in a while with Zoom. This is actually the reason why I got my Zoom, was because. So many people were asking me to do, uh. Do a class on some of the things that I study, and so I was doing classes on Friday nights, and I still do it every once in a while, but not very often. Uh, well, I do it maybe once or twice a month now. Uh, whenever a topic comes up that I really wanna talk about. But that's what kasa di, right here. Kasa di is grace, or. Um. All of his followers, right? Um, let me see what this says here, um. That's not what I wanted. That was, that's next, there, we're gonna go to that next, okay, um, then we have. This is one of the sight words here, right, coal. And to all, and for all. And to all. Um, where, where was I at with the? And to all the devoted followers, right? So, this, this should really be two words in here, right, this should be. This should be different, this should be, and to all his. Devoted. Or his faithful followers, right, cuz devoted and kasa, devoted is kasa di. And then followers is, uh, le Allah, le Allah. Right, his devoted followers. And sometimes you won't separate those two, it's like a phrase, right? Casa di le Allah, it's a, it's a phrase. To all of his devoted followers. Okay? Um. We have. Uleko, right, uleko. Not va leko, right, but it's uleko. And the reason why it's uliko is cuz you end the, the, the word before it would evolve. So you wouldn't say, la tarav va leko, you would say la tarav uliko. Right? The same is the case when we go into the Bible. Uh, let me show you real quick, we go into the Bible, we go to Deuteronomy. You go to Deuteronomy, chapter six. Right, um. Here. Uleko, right, uleko, uviko. So. It's, for, for, for whatever reason, the, uh. When you have coal, you always have the u and not the ve. And there's always an exception to that as well, but for the most part, when you see the coal like that, you're gonna, it's gonna be u. Uleko, um. And there's, there's a rule for that, I, I, I've, I've seen, but I, I, I mean, forgive me for not quoting it, but it's something about when you have the nominal. When you have the interpersonal pronoun ending, you had to say u instead of va, and so that's what, that's why that's there.
Okay.
Um. So let's start from, let's start from. Uh. I, I, I didn't find the word for autarav, but autur is the. Basic word, the construct state, autur, and then autur just means crown. And so, you know, they have the Ministry of Crown Brothers and Sisters, and so, you have auturim and auturot, and together, autarav. His crowns. Right, and to all. The devoted followers, near devoted follow, followers, far. And those, or that who stru- those who struggle. In his name, or for his cause. Right? So, we're gonna go to. Sarav is just, I'mma, I'mma blast through this real quick, the sar, right? We have a sarin, like sar malak, or sar eliakim. We have nasik, nasik, which is, uh. Like Nasik Emmanuel, or Nasik Heskeyahu, right? Um, hamashiach. Then you have. Old, a, a, ado, nenu, ado nenu, which is lord, right? Le avenu, which is father. So we're gonna read this from the top now. I'mma read it one time, and then I'm gonna have each of you try to read it as well. Let me zoom out, and then I'm gonna move my mouse over and try to get it in the center. Alright, it says. Corum ko, ko hakivo. Le yor yehowa. Yor kadosh Israel. Le avenu. Adenenu. Adenenu, Hamashiach. Le Nasikav, Lesorav, Le Aturav, Uleko, Casa di, Le Allah Shekerovin, Allah Sheri Kokin, She Ne Eva Kin. Bishmo, oh, Le Maano, Ani Mi Varech Ot Kin, Shalom Aleichem. Who's brave enough?
Kolom Ko, Ko Hakivod, Le Ya Yahwa. Ya. Kolim, oh, ka, Kolos, Kolos. Israel, eh, um, Le Avenu.
Mm-hmm.
Adonenu, Hash.
Amash.
Hamashi, Hamashiach. Um, Le Nasikin, Le Shari, shah. Right? I can't get that last part.
Ra.
Ra.
Yeah. Remember that ra.
Le Shavab.
That's Sar.
Sa. Le Sa.
There you go.
Le Ator, I took ma, Aturav.
Yes ma'am.
Uleko, u, u, kol. Hasi, Hasibin.
Mm-hmm.
Le, uh, Le Allah. Shek, Ra, Shekro, Shekrokin. Robin. Shekrobin, Torah. Allah. Sher, Kokeen. Sher Kokeen. Shen, Na, uh, Ke, King, Shen, Shenava King, Shenah, Shenah Avakin. Shenah, Shenavakin, Shenavakin is it?
Um, Ne, Ah, Va, King.
Shenavakin. There you go. Shenavakin. Bishmo, Oh, Le Ma, Le Ma Anu.
Yeah.
Le Ma Anu, Le Ma Anu, Le Ma Anu. Ani, Mi Varek, Mi, Mi Varek.
Yeah.
Eh, Lo, 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 the, the Lordy King.
Mm-hmm.
Old, Tekin, Ot King, Ot King.
Hmm.
Shalom. Oh, where did I go? Hmm.
Shalom.
Shalom Aleichem.
Yeah, there you go.
Skip the line.
Yeah, uh, yeah, cause I'm moving this stuff back and forth. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to, uh, get it back, yeah, for the next person. So that was, that was pretty good. That was pretty good. Yeah, that was really good.
Hold up, for the help.
Yes ma'am. So let's, let's see, we can get, uh, the next person to try.
Kolim, Ko, Ko Ha, Ka, Ha Ha Vo. La Ah. Um. Le, Le Ya. Yeah, Le, Le Ya, Yahwa, Ya. Um. Kad, Ka, Kadosh, Israel. La Ah, La Ah, Venu, Ado, Venu, Ad, A, A, Do. Me. Nenu. Am, Ameh. Amish. Um, wait, Ah, Mish. Amaseyak. Amish Ka. Amaseyak. Uh, oh, that is Amaseyak, Amaseyak. Um, La, Let's sing. The Miss, the King. La, La, Miss, eh. Ki. Ka. Is that, is that Ka? Uh huh.
Oh, yes.
Vanessa Ka. Uh huh. Vanessa Ka, uh huh. Lasta, Ra. Lasta Ra. Uh, oh, when I was that? La. To, I don't know what that is. La, La. Ah, To, Ra.
Yeah.
Um, Ula Ko.
Mm-hmm.
Ula Ko. Has. Hmm. Hasida, Hasida, Haside.
Casa di.
Casa di, Casa di, La, La Al, La Allah. Um, Shek, Robin.
Mm-hmm.
Allah. Da. Ra, Ko. Ko, King. Um, Obin. King, King. No. Ha, Ha Ra, Ko, King. Ki, Ki, uh, Kokeen. Se, She Ne Ha, She Ne E. Va, King. Vas. Vasmo, Ba, Bishmo.
There you go.
Bishmo, Al. Oh. Hmm? Oh, oh. Oh. Bishmo, oh, yeah, that's oh. Lama, Yeenu.
Yeah.
Ya.
Lama Anu. Anu.
Anu.
Yeah.
Ami. Mm-hmm. Me, Me Va.
Mm-hmm.
Ra. Me Vareh.
Me Vareh.
Me Vareh. Um, Oh. Oh. Can I just say, oh, oh? Ot Ki. Ot Kim, Ot Kim. Ot, Kim.
Yeah.
Shalom. Ah, La Kim.
Aleichem.
Aleichem.
Yeah.
Aleichem. Oh my lord. Mm-hmm.
Like, yo, you, you got through it. That's what matters.
Yes, she did.
Kol, Kol. Make sure you say the two Koles, right?
Uh huh, Kol, Kol, yes.
Kol, Kol, Hakivod. It almost, it, it, it almost rhymes, right? It almost sounded like Kolom Ko, Ko Hakivod.
Kolom Ko, Ko Hakivod.
Yeah, everybody say that. Kolom Ko, Ko Hakivod.
Kolom Ko, Ko Hakivod.
Yes ma'am. Kolom Ko, Ko Hakivod, Le Yar Yahwa.
Le Yar Yahwa.
Yar Kadosh Israel.
Yar Kadosh Israel.
Venu. Le Venu.
Le Venu. Le Venu.
Adenenu.
Adenenu.
Or you can say Ado, right? Cause this is a va.
Ado Nenu.
Yes, Hamashiach.
Hamashiach.
And this term might not be correct. It might, that might be a sheen instead of a scene, okay?
Okay.
Maybe that's not correct. Hamashiach, yes. Le Nasikav.
Le Nasikav.
Sarav.
Sarav. Sarav.
Le Aturav.
Le Atora. Orav.
Okay, so Le Nasikav, Le Sarav, Le Aturav.
Le Nasikav, Le Sarav. Le Sarav. Orav.
Orav, yes ma'am. Un Ko, you can say Uleko, that's better. Uleko. Casa di.
Casa di.
Le Allah.
Le Allah.
Shekerovin.
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 It's very strange word when you are trying to sound it out. Shekerovin.
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 Mm-hmm.
Allah, now we have.
La.
She, Re.
Re. Yeah.
Ko.
King. King.
We have She Ne Eva King.
Shenavakin. Shenavakin.
Yeah.
She Ne Eva King.
We have, um, Oh, Le, Le Yar Kadosh Israel, Le Ad, Le Avenu, Le Ah, let's say, Le Avenu, Adonenu, Hamashiach. Le Ah, Le Nasikav, Lesorav, Le Aturav, Uleko, Casa di, Le Allah Shekerovin, Allah Sherre Kokin, She Ne Eva King.
She Ne Eva King.
Let's try, let's try it from here. Uh, let's try this. Casa di, Le Allah Shekerovin, Allah Sherre Kokin, She Ne Eva King.
Open.
We'll do, we'll do, we'll do it together one time. Casa di.
Casa di.
Le Allah.
Le Allah. Allah.
Shekerovin.
Shekerovin.
Allah.
Allah.
Ko King.
Sherre. Sherre Kokin. Ko King. Ko King. Ko King.
She Ne Eva King.
She Ne Eva King.
One more time. Casa di.
Casa di.
She Allah.
Le Allah.
Shekerovin.
Shekerovin.
La.
Allah.
Sherre Kokin.
Sherre Kokin.
She Ne Eva King.
She Ne Eva King.
Okay, I'm gonna go get this baby back to my wife and then, uh,
Hey baby.
For a couple seconds, okay? Uh, say hi, I'm ready.
Hey, Shalom baby.
Shalom.
Shalom baby. Shalom. Acochi Sarah. Yeah. You reading in blue? I hear her. That's so sharp. I hear her reading. I, I did, but I wanna hear her. Oh, read. That's as sharp as you guys. Definitely. The top here? It's got a. Where the blue is, where the blue starts. Yeah. The blue, that is the difficult part. Casa di. Casa di, mm-hmm. Casa di, Le, uh. No, no M though, no M. Allah, Shekerovin.
Make sure. Put a, uh, it's a Casa di. I'mma, I'mma break it down. Ka. Si.
Casa di.
Casa di. Casa di.
Casa di. Oh. Casa di. Casa di, Le Allah, Sherre Kokin. Allah, Sher, Ko, Queen. Ko Queen. Uleko King. Sherre, Ko Queen. She Ne E. Va Queen.
King, there you go.
She Ne Eva King. She Ne Eva King.
Alright, so we have Casa di, La, Le Allah, Shekerovin, Allah, Sherre Kokin.
Sherre, King.
Yeah, Sherre Kokin. She Ne Eva King, She Ne Eva King.
Eva King. She Ne Eva King.
Bishmo, you know, that's in the name of him.
Bishmo.
Or Bishmo. Le Maano in the ne- for the sake of him.
Le Maano. Le Ma Ano. Le Ma Ano.
Le Ma Ano, yeah. Now, you know, it's no, but I mean, when you're saying it real fast, nobody's gonna stop you. Say you said nu instead of no, so don't worry about that. The context gives it away.
Le Ma Ano, I mean.
And you have people from Israel, from all places, they have all kind of accents. And so don't worry about if, if you say no versus nu. Alright, it's, as long as you know what you're saying. Alright, I'm gonna read through, I'm going to read through it one more time here and then, uh, we're, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna take a little brain.
Mind say slowly.
Mind say slowly? Okay. Kolom Ko, Ko Hakivod, Ha Ka Vo. Kolom Ko, Ko Ha Ka Vo. And you know, this is the, this, uh, thing in the mouth here is telling you that it's a guttural. Ha Ka Vo, right? Ha Ka Vo. Ha Ka Vo. Le, A, La Allah, I'm sorry, La Ya, Yahwa, La Ya Yahwa, Yar Kadosh Israel. Yar Kadosh, Ka, Dosh, D O S H, Kadosh. Yar Kadosh Israel. Le Avenu, Le Avenu, Ado Nenu, Le Avenu, Adonenu, Hamashiach. Le Nasakav or Nasikav, Le Nasika, Le Nasikav, Lesorav. That's Sarav, like Sarav, yeah. Sar, Sarav. Aturav, Aturav. And I could, I could probably make this into the Hebrew, uh, if I, if I just really, if I just really wanted to, right? Go to my Hebrew calculator, pull it up here, on screen keyboard, um, and then I could say, Le, uh, let me see.
Or.
Ah.
Ya.
To. Ra, right? Like this, the Aturav. And this is probably gonna be, this is probably gonna be this one, uh, honestly. Le Aturav. Right? Uh, then this could be, here, this would be, Uleko, right?
Uleko.
Yeah, Le Aturav. I didn't wanna go through all that trouble, but Le Aturav, Uleko, Casa di. Now for the Casa di, again, we have, probably, we, we best if we put that, uh, that, uh, Shidik right there, right? So we go here, we put the Shidik. Where is Shidik? This is Shidik. There we go. Casa di, Casa di.
Casa di.
La, Le Allah. Le Allah.
Yeah.
Sheke, Shekerovin.
Shekerovin.
You gotta bounce to the E once. Sheke, Sheke. Shekerovin. Yeah, bounce to the E. Shekerovin.
Shekerovin.
Amah.
Allah.
Sherre, you gotta bounce to the R again. Shit, the E again. Sherre, Sherre Kokin. She korovim, shek, shekero vee. Yeah, it's, it's kind of strange, cause you have the S H K R O vee. Then here you have the S H R O K R E K O vee, so it's, it's the same word, kinda same sounds, but they're in a different, uh, distribution. See, this is shekero, this is shereko. Shekero, shereko. So it's, it's kind of the same, it's the same kind of sound, and that's why I might be tripping y'all up a little bit, it's the same kinda. It's the same kind of sound, and they're really, they're really immediate after each other. Shekero vee, alo shereko king, she ne eva king. Bishmo. In the name of him, oh, or. Le maano in the sake, or for the sake of him. Ani me varich, ani me varich. Ot king. Ot king, or otte king. Shalom aleich. Shalom aleich.
Shalom aleich, now what verse is that now?
This is not a verse in the Bible, this is not a verse, this is. It's a greeting, it's called the Divine Salutation.
Okay.
It, it is not a Bible verse.
Okay.
And what, what you're saying is basically, first, kodom ko, right, first of all. Let me, let me, first of all, right, kodom, uh. Let me change my cap, my keyboard to English, first of all. Giving. Right? Right, ha ka vo, right? Kol ha ka vo, right, all, first of all, all the honor. All the honor, right, ha ka vo, le ya yehua, to ya yehua. First of all, all honor to ya yehua, right? Ya kadosh Israel, the holy one, kadosh, or set apart, the set apart one of Israel, right? Le avenu, to our father. Adonenu, and Lord, and our Lord, it should be, and our Lord, right? And then he would say, ben ami, right, hamashiach, which would be our Lord, ben ami, the Messiah. Right, the Messiah. Le nis, uh, le, le nisikav, right, to his princes, or to the princes that belonged to him. Le sarav, to his ministers, or the ministers that belonged to him. Le aturav, to the crowns that belonged to him, but we say, to the crown brothers and sisters, right? Uleko, and to all, uleko is right here, uleko, and to all, right? Uleko kasadi, his devoted, right? Le alo, le ala, his devoted followers. His devoted follower, or his blessed followers, or his graces, his gracious followers, right? Le ala. Near, shekero vee, is near. Right, le ala and his followers. She ro, shereko ke, his followers far, right? Um, she ne eva king, and to all who are struggling. Right, those who are struggling, you, you might, you might even say, uh, o shek ne eva king. But that's just another syllable you gotta put in there, right, you don't have to put that, you don't have to, you don't have to transcribe it word for word, you know, strike for strike. Uh, struggling is, those struggling is, she ne eva king, those struggling, right? In his name, bishmo, or bisham, or bishamo, bishmo. In his name, or for his sake, oh, le maano. I welcome you all, ani me varich, ot king, king is, you are, you are, right? Ot king, I welcome you all, peace, shalom, be appointed, shalom aleich. It's, 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 it's really quite beautiful when you say it. You know, it's very, it's, it's, it's very polite. It, it, it is very, it's very, you gotta just practice it and practice it some more, and eventually you get it. And then you, now that you know how to read it, I mean, you will be able to pick it out a little bit more, a little bit better, right? Kodom ko, kol haki vo, le ya yehua, ya kadosh Israel. Le avenu adonenu hamashiach. Le na, le nesikav, le sarav, le aturav. Uleko kasadi, le ala shekero vee. Ala shereko king, she ne eva king, bishmo, oh, le maano. Ani me varich, ot king, shalom aleich.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
I'm gonna learn that.
Wait, 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 record yourself saying it and just keep practicing it, you know, all you gotta do is keep practicing it. Keep practicing it, keep practicing it, and eventually, you'll get the, you'll get the words nice and, uh. It, it, I didn't do it first like that, well, not my first time either, but it just with repetition and practice. I mean, cause both of y'all know how to sound out the words, so just trust. You gotta just trust your translation, trust, trust in your decoding skills, to decode the, 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 the sounds of the words. Uh, and then, we're gonna do Psalms one thirty-three, but I'll say this for later day, cause this is gonna be just as long as. That, and I don't wanna overwhelm the brain.
Why in particular that one?
Why in particular this one? Uh, because there is a song to it, um, and the song is sang by. Um, Asara Samakia, it's one of the few songs, things she sings herself, and it goes. He ne, he ne, matoh ha olam, uh, uh, whatever she says, I gotta find it, I'm gonna find it. And we, we, we'll sing it and we're. You know?
Yeah, please find it and send it.
Yeah. Shevet akin, look at this, shevet akin gam yahad. Shevet akin, shevet akin gam yahad. It's a song, yeah, how good and how pleasant it is for brothers.
Okay, I like that.
Yeah, sheer, ha, ma, was it a song of the degrees of David? Ma, ha ma alot, ha ma alot. Le davi.
Yes, okay, I like that, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, and, and maybe it's something we, we try to memorize, we try to go over to, over with, um. I, I'm asked to pray a lot in, in my different organizations, because people like that I can speak some Hebrew. You know, and, 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 and I'm, I'm by no means fluent in Hebrew. I mean, if, if, if we are in like the first grade, second grade, third grade stage, I'm probably like. A eighth grader or ninth grader, I'm still not fluent in Hebrew. But I am just working, just like you ladies are working on trying to get, learn as much as I can. So, we're, 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 we're helping each other out, and that's why I say, you all help me out just as much as I help you all, so. If there's anything you wanna learn, any kind of Bible verse, or somebody comes to you with a question, um, you know, we could always talk about it on the platform. I don't mind.
Okay. All right, I need one thing.
Yes ma'am.
Deva reem hakesset password and.
For the class, sure, this comes from, uh, Isaiah chapter sixty, right? Uh, uri, kumi uri kiba orich, you guys ever heard of that?
Um, Isaiah who?
Isaiah, chapter sixty.
Six oh, okay.
Isaiah sixty, it's the same word that we use in, uh, the Divine Salutation, right? Here we go, kumi uri. Kiba orich. U kivod, right, u kivod yehua. Ah la yech. Zarach.
Okay.
Alayech zarach. So kumi uri kiba orich, u kivod yehua alayech zarach. That means ra, arise, right, take action, lift up, kuma, same thing, kumi, or kumba, right? Kumba, like in kumbaya, kumba, come, what, what is ba? Ba, sir, here says. To come, right? So you say kum, kumbaya, you're saying, rise up and come to me, y'all, come to my defense, come to my aid. Kumba, y'all, it's a command, come to my aid. Kumi uri kiba orich. U kivod, right, kivod. Right, and that which means glory, right? Yeah, and we, we, we use that word right here, right? Kodom ko, kol haki vo.
Yes.
All glory and power or honor.
That's a song we used to sing when I was little, kumbaya, my lord, kumbaya, I'm like, okay.
And that, that's where you get the kum. This is kumi, kum, ba, it's right there, and yehua. Kumbaya, come, right, not, not just to rise, but, uh, come to my defense, right, rise up. Kum, kumba, come, rise up to me, rise up to my defense, y'all, come take, take action on my behalf. Kumbaya.
Wow. All right, and now I need the zoom address and password.
Yes, uh, it's, 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 it's a powerful thing, man, when you, when you can dissect that Hebrew, because you start to see.
Been around for a long time.
Find out that what you thought you knew, you don't really know. But yeah, that's, that's where, that's where that comes from, uh, kumbaya, and so uri, right? Uri just means lights, or my lights, right? Now, if it was urro, it would be your lights, urro, uri, urra, right, her lights. Urru, urru is their light, or your light, our lights.
Okay.
King is their lights, or him, you, you can put that on any kind of verb. Or any kind of noun, you can put those things on there to give it, to give it possession.
Getting there, okay.
Okay, so that's, that's another verse that I've memorized, um, an- another one that is very common that I. I, I haven't memorized, but I do, uh, go to it when I, when it's time to pray, is Deuteronomy chapter six. And, um, what's that verse, four and five, right?
You don't do four to nine?
I don't know, I wish, I, I wish I had taken the time to learn the other verses, but. I would have to sit there and learn them, and then go through them several times before I could recite it, yeah. Yeah. The, the, the song that the girls sing is, uh, you guys ever heard of that, those girls?
Yes ma'am.
Shema by, uh, three before grace, I think, three before joy.
Oh yeah, they're good.
Yeah. Let's see if we can hear what they're saying. I'm gonna skip to this part here.
Beautiful.
God bless.
Few songs that I like there, um, and it's, it's amazing, this is twelve years old now, it's crazy.
Yeah.
Well, um, yeah, that, that's a very good group, man, I like them, Three Before Joy, um. So, we're, we're gonna end the class right there, cause, uh, that's a lot to, that, that Divine Salutation is a lot to process. And I know I have been promising that we're gonna go through it and break it down and learn what it says, and so, I'm glad that we finally did it. And now it just takes us going through it every week and, and, you know, reciting it and, and going through it to try to commit it to memory.
Yeah.
Did y'all have any, uh, any questions or any concerns, comments?
Thank you, thank.
Alright, so I'm gonna go here to, uh, the, uh, I guess I gotta go to it's in numbers here. Cause I don't have it on, uh, I haven't broken it down yet, but we're gonna go to the lowering of the arch. It says here, starting from. Um, shuva right here, shuva yehua, rivavvo. Afay, Israel. Return, right, to return, in the same, it says here, uh, imperative, second person masculine singer. So this is in the same imperative, and what does imperative mean? With, with, with haste, with vigor, with, with fury or with wrath, to return. It's the same as the kuma or a kumba, it's the same tenacity, the same energy. Shavu or shuva yehua, shuva yehua, rivavvo afay, Israel. Return yehua unto the many thousands of Israel. Unto the many thousands. Of Israel. Hallelujah.
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 Well, ladies, I really enjoyed, uh, you guys coming on the call and, uh, listening to me, uh, mess up some Hebrew for two hours.